Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:00 P.M. Anyone present may not record, video, or audio and/or leave any cellphone on without permission. I will now call for disclosure of community area interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none for the agenda for this meeting and for the minutes of the meeting at which member was not in attendance, we'd like to go to administrative reports, 7.1, the C.A.O. on modernization strategy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the second intake for the Ontario government's municipal modernization program was announced on January 26 by Minister Clarke, Municipal Mayor of housing. The second intake allows municipalities to point this program to conduct a review of operational services as well as implement projects of the origin reviewed. So like some communities during intake one did a review of operations and it could have been holistic review or it could have been just, you know, one function of their operations. But now they can apply for funding, second intake for implementation of that previous review. So we're at the review stage. Intake one, so this is rural and northern municipalities, 405 municipalities, 184, apply the end on approval. So this isn't automatic, I mean, this program, you still have to apply and then your application will be, you know, reviewed based on its merits. So what we're proposing to do for this intake two is to do a review and it aligns, a review that aligns with our vision we talked about, vision through a strategic plan or sustainability plan. And that is our long-term waste management, including recycling. Recently, we've had conversations with industry and we'll get into it later in the OGR recap. But we've talked about our partnerships, existing partnerships, like shared services with your falls, but our discussions with the Canachou. And then that vision of that North-South core stretching front, you know, could stretch right from Sandy Lake, First Nation, right down to the nation. So a lot of work needs to be done there. But from our perspective and through this funding opportunity, we'd like to review our existing, how we match our waste through our transport site, which I believe has been very successful. But also look at our recycling and as we reported to the ministry of environment conservation of parks, it's costing us on the average, like a five-year average, it's $297,000 per year recycled. And kudos to Red Lake for doing that because we're a community of less than 5,000. There's no requirement for us to recycle. But so good for Red Lake, but that comes at a cost and we'd like to review that further. More is coming down the pipe when it comes to the Blue Box program, producer responsibility. Many questions out on that, but that could be part of our review. So in a nutshell, what we'd like to do is apply that escrow retains to our waste management and recycling. If I overdubbed it, any questions, comments, or concerns with our proposal?
I think this is definitely a direction that we need to go into. So any way that we as councillors consist that I think left, no, very healthy.
Mary Moore, you have a question?
Just a comment that, you know, I think we should be moving forward with this. It's an opportunity through the province to hopefully obtain some funding and the modernization strategy, as the C.A.O. alluded to the fact, they give us some direction in regards to landfilling cost and recycling and what we do with our waste. I think it's all a positive thing and I look forward to hopefully receiving the funding that we can initiate this modernization strategy for us and that is valuable. Yeah, going all for it.
Well, thank you, Mr. C.A.O., for that information. The next one we have is the OGR virtual conference recap. And Mr. C.A.O., you have a recap?
I do, but I'll do it, the mayor will have lots to add to it because of the program, just myself, the mayor, three delegations with the province. The mayor did the majority of the speaking. So it went well. Thankful that we could do it virtually for this OGR conference. However, it's not quite the same when you're, it's not quite the same. There's just something about doing things in person. And although on the screen you could see the mayor and you could see, like Minister Europe saying for environment conservation of parks, but you couldn't see the other main people unless they were called upon. And so you don't get a read a lot of times when we're meeting face to face. And we've all done it to some capacity at different conferences. But there's so much value in reading the other parties at the table. So like when I'm sitting here and the mayor is speaking to Minister Mulrooney down in Toronto or in Ottawa for A-MO, I'm watching the bureaucrats. And what's, you know, what's the matter? Is, are they writing things down or are they humping up the scars? You know, so there's a lot of value in that. So thankful that we could do it virtually, just still not the same. So we had an opportunity to be with the parliamentary assistant, Dave Smith, with Energy and Urban Development Alliance. We talked about a number of different subject matters, but I'll pass it to the mayor. Perhaps you can speak with some of the subjects.
Sure. It was a good meeting with Dave. Going back to relationship building, we know Dave, Mr. Smith, P.A. Smith, very well. Going back, we met him at Queens Park a couple of times as well. So we discussed, in generalities, we discussed tailings ponds following the assessment taxation purposes, resource revenue sharing. We shared Red Lake's opinion on resource revenue sharing and how much heads out of Red Lake in regards to taxation and our contributions to Ontario and Canada through economic status of over $3 billion in over nine years. We had also spoken to P.A. Smith about the man tax, municipal accommodation tax in regards to transient mining accommodations, legacy properties, such as what we're dealing with in Red Lake right now, and a few other smaller matters. But that was kind of the generalities of it. So we couldn't get in front of Mr. or Minister Rickford during the conference. He was tied up with some other things, but we're very happy to meet with Mr. Smith and he's very well, very well versed with Red Lake's needs and our asks. And he said he could be sharing those with the minister. And of course, we typically get a letter back from the ministry after a conference, so we'll keep you updated on that as well.
So then we also had another change and we mentioned briefly with environment conservation parks. Spoke about the recycling and also the long-term waste management strategies. What has been impressive with ministry at this point, we've had three meetings since, meeting with the ministry. And for example, like the Blue Box program with recycling and our facilities manager was part of that meeting. We discussed with the bureaucrats, you know, our challenges and our confusion at this point. And they followed up by saying that there is a draft plan online and we were not aware of it at the time. So if you get an opportunity to take a look at the provincial government's environment conservation site and you'll be able to see that, you'll be able to see the draft document. And I'll pass it over to the mayor. But again, what I'm noticing with this government is that they're reacting. When we have questions and we ask, they're now reacting. A few months ago, well, a year ago, that is much better. I feel the sense that they really are trying to be more helpful, but I'll pass it to the mayor.
No, thank you, Mr. C.A.O. We also spoke about, as the C.A.O. alluded to the fact earlier on, our loss per recycle averages up to about $397,000 a year. While we don't have to opt into it, the minister understands that. We asked the minister if there would be any type of financial compensation he could provide the municipality until the Blue Box program ends. In a nutshell, he said he would look at it. So we're hoping that we'll receive some sort of financial aid for our recycling program. We had spoken about the costs of our waste transfer where we take down to your falls and our future in regards to landfills. We asked him about the process involved with EAs and partnering with other municipalities or First Nation friends and our neighbors to the north on what that looks like. And my understanding is the C.A.O. has already had some discussion with staff and bureaucrats regarding that process and what needs to take place and move that forward. So Minister Europe was very, very good because we discussed our long-term waste strategy and that need for us here in Red Lake and of course, all of our surrounding municipalities. So Minister Europe was very receptive to our ideas and our discussions and as the C.A.O. alluded to earlier. He's had numerous meetings and follow-ups from that already. So it was a positive meeting with Minister Europe.
And then another takeaway from, and we had a heard later on, about the long-term waste management strategy. Whereas we spoke of that, like the connection between the provincial and the federal governments. Because if we're looking at partners, not only like our friends to the south, your falls, the nations, whatever, but we've had dialogue with the Canachou. So where does that, we're trying to find that connection with all parties, community to community, then both of the province to the feds as well. And so we now have a contact who's going to, Kenora, who's going to be our go-to person, who has provided information already, has provided contacts from a federal perspective. So we'll have an upcoming meeting with the province and the feds, you know, so we can discuss our vision further. And once there's an opportunity, I'm sure the mayor will reach out to Dean O'Callaghan and, you know, start that, I guess, take off of where we left off in our last discussions. So very positive. On a positive note, with the Ministry of Transportation, we didn't even ask for a delegation and we received one. So that's good. Like the staffer that was scheduling meetings said, "You guys must be pretty up for Red Lake because the minister is accepting your delegation that you never asked for." So we had an opportunity to be with Minister Mulrooney. We talked about the vehicle charging stations and I'll let the mayor elaborate on that and also the Barren River Bridge, similar to the ministry of environment conservation parks. I had that follow-up, home calls in, a couple of emails from transportation. And what ministry of transportation has done, and I've added them on this, or applaud them for this move, is they created a division within the ministry that, I guess, as my contact, I'm going to be stated, that they're bridging that gap between municipalities and the engineers in MTO. So now there's that liaison group within MTO to help. So because a lot of times, the mayor can attest to this, we'd have a meeting and then we wouldn't hear a thing, you know, for over a year. So another positive note with the province is good.
For sure. And just to give you a brief synopsis again, we met with Mr. Mulrooney at the Roma Conference earlier the month prior and they promised us work on the crosswalk and they were going to be looking at some different speed reductions along 125 that we've talked to them about internally. So they're doing that follow-up through there. So again, we were delighted that Minister Mulrooney wanted to see us. We had spoken about the zero emission vehicle infrastructure program that councillor Hager had spoken about previously. He gave us some information on to have those vehicle electric charging stations all the way through 125, doing the north-south corridor, just not the east-west corridor. So we had actually brought this up to Minister Europe, Environment Conservation and Parks, but he said MTO is after it. So we got our chance to speak with the minister about that and they provided us some information. The other issue that we brought forward was the importance of the Barren River Bridge and what's happening with that. So speaking with our MP, Eric Malillo, he shared some information with me on a letter that he received from Minister Marcus Miller, who's Indigenous Services for Federal Canada. And in that letter, he alluded to the fact that the MTO had some assessments and waiting that they had to do in regards to the Barren River Bridge. And that was the first time we heard about the MTO involvement with a federal project like that. So when we had spoken to the minister, she said she would be investigating that and providing us some more information from their end. But they didn't really have too much information regarding the Barren River Bridge specifically for us at this meeting. But as our C.A.O. mentioned earlier, they've been really good with follow-up today. So we're hoping to be here on that initiative as well soon. So it was nice to see Mr. Mulrooney and actually she's been very good to Red Lake about getting things done for us. So we're very appreciative of that. So, thank you.
So the last delegation received, and it came in late, but it was with the Ministry of Finance, remember the parliamentary assistant, Michael Parsa, who made mention that, he clearly remembers us because that was his first delegation ever as an MPP was with us, recalls having a discussion with Mayor Moata after that meeting. So we brought up the tailings facilities again. And we showed them out and it really shows how the community of Ballmer Town is on an island and it's surrounded by about 519 hectares of plant that is really not, well, it's active tailings or it's old tailings. So we're just asking that that be taxed accordingly because without a tailings facility, you can't operate it fine. So we're just looking for an element of fairness on that. We spoke of the natural gas pipeline again, Red Lake is not receiving that fair share when it comes to taxation on pipeline. We're receiving 70% of the residential rate and that compared to other communities, other communities are getting, you know, 200%, 137%, 150% of the residential rate. And we're asking for 110%. And we've been asking for that since, as long as, since 2013. And even the education, they get significantly more. So they're, I guess, they're, I guess, they're getting more money for the education whereas they're paying themselves in that respect. But, or the pipelines are paying more to the education fund. So again, this is something we'll follow up on. We've been asking this question for so long and we haven't had an answer. So the expectation is that we will get an answer on this. And then we'll talk about a couple other items.
Yeah, but we also spoke about the man tax again, the money cap situation and what that looks like from the Ministry of Finance perspective. We spoke about our REACH facility and the other topic was OMPF, our Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund and how we continue and continue to get slashed in funding and it's well over a million dollars now. So they are going to be providing us some information on that. But we are asking that we need to have a clear understanding as to what's creating this decrease in transfer payments to the municipality. So we're hoping to have follow-up with the Ministry of Finance. And just out of note, we put in for a delegation with Minister Clarke, M.M.H. And when we wanted to discuss the OMPF with him, he actually created this meeting, I believe, with the Ministry of Finance because we didn't have this delegation at first. So again, it just goes to show you that we have a good relationship with a lot of ministers in the city government. And Minister Clarke made this meeting available for us during OGR, which was a positive thing because we don't get in to see the Ministry of Finance very often. We typically get rejected more often than not. So we were happy to have this meeting. And we also educated them, as our C.A.O. mentioned earlier, about the tailings facility because I really don't think they understand that money perspective for community space from a taxation perspective. So it was very, very good meeting and we're looking forward to the feedback from that as well.
And just in closing, we did ask for a delegation with the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, Mr. Fadelli's ministry, who received no response on that. Our intent was to talk about the significant economic benefits of the facility with that REACH would help for a region. So we never did get that opportunity. So if anyone has any questions or comments, we'd like your answers.
So just to go back on the Blue Box program. So I remember last year we were at Moata there, they had asked about, we had talked about that possibly as being a part of that testing or first part. Is there a bit more set on that?
So, yeah, it was a bit confusing because we thought we were going to be part of a pilot project. But it turns out that we're not part of a pilot project. We're part of the first phase. So Northwest Ontario is, by 2023, should be full producer responsibility. Whereas the rest of the province will, by 2025, should be very active. So that's how they explained it to us. So again, so many things need to be answered on that. Like, are the producers actually going to physically come to Red Lake to pick up the recycling? Are they going to contract to us or private operator to do it? There's just, there's a lot of wooden parts right now.
I think that's why we asked the minister first on financial aid in regards to all of this. And I believe we have a double 2025 in case we didn't outbuild till, say, 2024 or the late stage of 2025. So we haven't heard back on the financial piece yet. I thought we're hopeful he seemed very open to it. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you very much for your information. So we have the NOMR virtual conference as well.
Yeah, so, and thank you, Christina, for providing some information on this. So the NOMR virtual conference is April 28th to the 30th. So the cost to attend virtually is $125 per person. So we're just caught up, we're looking for numbers. There's no delegation opportunities for this conference, in fact. I haven't seen any agenda yet from you. So we're just looking for numbers on who would like to attend. Attend, I mean, $825 is crazy compared to, again, looking for an OMR.
And states are eliminated?
Oh, it's April 28th to April 30th.
Oh, it's just May.
Okay. I'll check my schedule if I'm over. Okay, I'll check my schedule.
And there is no, as it stated, there's no further deadline or anything. So as long as you make a decision, like if you fire, I think you can say that you can get in. I don't think they would reject that. You're working, you know, fully hour.[1534.63][1534.63][laughter] Yeah. So if you don't want to, I'll just move right into A-MO.
Well, I don't need to, I was just going to ask you the same.
It's the same theme. So A-MO, early bird deadline is April 30th. So you can decide before then. Cost is $600 per, the A-MO conference is August 15th through the 18th. That one, I believe, will be just like similar to OGR. Whereas if you're to participate in a delegation, you have to be registered to the conference. And for OGR, myself and the mayor registered, so Todd, and Todd sent in on probably about 90% of the presentations. So we have until April 30th, just wanted to decide, just want to put that on your radar. Again, August 15th to August 18th. And then as long as we're social distancing, well, hopefully, it's not quite in August, but we'll see. But we can host it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So anybody have any questions? All right, we will carry on to the new business. And we have 7.1, Crown Land.
Actually, I can start. We've had several discussions and I know the mayor has talked personally with Minister Yapi Lukey regarding Crown Land development. If you look at...
It's the right one in the middle, it's good to go up.
Well, I was going to, well, okay. You have maps in front of you. We express to the provincial government, specifically MRF, that red, the municipality of Red Lake owns a few percent of the vacant land within our municipality. The rest is Crown, Forest Patrick, Crown and Plank. So within these maps, it gives you an idea, the maps, yes. Look at the first one, that gives you an idea of everything in yellow or orange depends on your level of cavers.[1714.98][1714.98][laughter] So let's call it yellow, it's Crown.[1724.12][1724.12][laughter] The purple is Plankland Place or Plankland Land. And, yeah, so the green is the municipality of Red Lake. So for today's purposes, I think it'd be nice to have a little discussion about areas that we would like to approach the Crown on further. Recently, property has been forested, in close proximity to our, well, generally this, I would put close proximity to the onset of Red Lake, close to our highly commercial area. I believe there's some opportunities there for us. Having discussions with actually councillors. Having discussions with, uh, actually councillor Butterfield in the last couple of weeks, the, you know, it's obvious that there, there's a lot of developers getting hired and held, and, uh, I mean, it's never, questions, questions. It's never too late to start the process. Uh, and although Minister Yankovuski has stated, or the, the minister has stated that the process is, should be easier now with King Crown Land, uh, we're hoping that's the case. But I'd like to just open it up for a general, uh, discussion if possible, and the mayor would like to elaborate on it, discussions with the minister.
No, certainly, thank you. You know, well, going way back before any discussions with Minister Yankovuski, Northern District Service Board has always wanted, wants to develop and, and municipalities and lands within the entire district. And one of the things in early discussions when I was, uh, first on the board was about land logging and having land available for future development and zoning correctly. Because typically, the KDSP has monies at the end of the year, and if something is ready, maybe a piece of land and it's zoning correctly, it's that much easier to look for. So moving forward discussions with the minister, we have shared, again, how our municipality only has three percent of the vacant land available. So how in the world are we going to develop and build if we only have three percent of vacant land next to what possible? So discussions, uh, we're going back two years now with the minister in regards to crown land opportunities, and the minister's very aware of Red Lake and the crown that, and the crown land that is available. So in order for us to move forward as a council and our municipality, the CAO and myself have had discussions in regards to, well, maybe we need to start thinking of particular lands instead of having all these different ideas floating out there. If we could focus at least on one area, then at least we can start the process moving forward. And the reason that I want to move the process forward is not only for land development, but we also have to remember that there's a, a parental election next year, and typically they'll be shutting down probably January, because they'll be going into election mode. So I think it's important and vital for us to move forward on something, on crown land that we would like to see developed. So the CAO's, uh, has mentioned a large piece of property and we went out for, uh, an exploration drive of cleared land behind Hughes Crescent there, uh, close to the Super 8, across the road and, and back through there, and there's a lot of cleared crown land in that area. And that could be good for future development of homes, for their business, you know, whatever that looks like. But that's a large piece of property there, and there's also room for expansion on that piece of property, because it goes all the way back to, uh, Kelso's Farm, doesn't it? Well, it's by property, yeah, Kelso's Farm, so it's a, it's a large piece of, of area in there. And again, a lot of forestry's been done in there, so that was one of the areas I was thinking about, but we, we need to have a discussion here around the table on what council feels, uh, that we should take this as an opportunity with crown land and move forward to the ministry with. So I'm thankful that, uh, staff are able to print out these maps and color them according, whether we have a photo app or not. And then we can kind of look at different areas that are available, but we want to also think that we want to develop the main help, which is Red Lake itself. But I'm not opposed to thinking in other different areas throughout our municipalities. So I don't know if there's any, any, uh, thoughts, discussion you'd like to have.
I would definitely like to move forward, uh, to, uh, look at acquiring the crown land, like you said, beside the Super 8, important area, back towards the, uh, the property that we own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a huge piece of crown land there.
It is, it is.
Can I ask a question? Uh, with the, I know the color, so I'm sorry, I'm trying to differentiate between the others. Okay, so some areas are big, huge areas, and then others are smaller, and the difference between patented and unpatented, that's confusing, so if you could explain it?
So patented means, uh, you, you own, correct or wrong? The patented is you own above the surface rates, example of a patent is you just own surface, surface rates. That's all right. And minecopes?
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah, so patented mining claims.
Yeah.
Uh, whoever owns it owns everything. So that, a lot of people, when they were staking claims back in the old days, they state the patented mining claim, they may have sixty, seventy acres, but they're only occupying like three, but they own everything and they, they, they won't give it up because of the mineral rights law.
So just for clarification then, does that mean that the, this parcel land that we're looking at right now, for instance, if it's, is it just straight up land or is it?
Right.
It is, it's straight up, okay. What about on the other side, um?
However, that, there, there, someone could have the right to, even likely.
Okay.
Right, so if you went to the lands division and, uh, evolution, and they showed you what they, you know, because I don't think, like, I'm a lot better, I'm sure, you know, the mineral rights, rights under, under the ground, but sorry, councillor Hager, do you have any?
Oh, no, just because it is, because it is difficult trying to figure out what's what. So the, that other parcel, parcel of land there, where there's like nine, sort of nine lots, so across the, everyone has five, one to fill up, ten, so it's about, who, how do we know what that is?
That's actually right behind NTI's site. So that's, yeah, that's behind the NTI.
Oh, there.
So when you go down the highway?
No, I know, I know that, but I'm just wondering how, how do you know what that is?
Well. You almost have to probably go to the mineclos office to figure it out. Or Christina, I don't know, Christina with, uh, something on that.
Uh, for surface rates, we can find out through here.
And this is surface rates.
Yeah.
This, this right here. Right, and so, so here, surface, uh, the, so the purple on your lot, it, it towards the farming is the same color as, as someone's patented mine claim that's, you know, that's further off, they're gonna touch it over or something. Does that make sense? Did you have something that I just sort of catch up on?
Nope, that's, we, it's my, I will surface rate, it's, we do there.
With, with the actual owner, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Postock.
So along with that as well, I've, I mean, you've got this section, this section, and this section right here as well. Uh, to me, all of those good for, for development, I mean, it's, uh, closer to Red Lake, and there's still, uh, there's, uh, some waterfront property there as well, and those would be kind of areas that I would, would be in for, uh, look at that.
Okay, can you explain what those areas are, what you're speaking of?
All right, so if you're looking at the end of Delamore Road.
Yeah, so Delamore Road, right, so you've got this section, that's, and then that's the area that was cut, right, that you guys went, looked at. So it would be in between there.
So that would be cut area two though, Jamie, where you just pointed?
Yeah.
That's all cut as well. So, but that's, uh, it comes off the corner where that RV is, that's all cut in there now.
So I'm just going to base it on here, it's crown land, is, is there an opportunity for us to do something with that?
So perhaps, with what, just to go off, perhaps there's an opportunity to connect Delamore to Lake Drive, Kelso's Farm?
Yeah.
Who owns the, the purple trunk in between the two?
I don't know.
No, it's just, there's eight trunk there, so that's probably the line, I was just wondering if we could get an easement. Mayor Moira?
Yes, uh, I don't know how successful we're gonna be in this discussion we're gonna have about submitting, uh, a whole bunch of properties or crown land properties. Uh, we may be able to submit maybe, well, one for sure, but maybe try for two, potentially three, but we've only been unsuccessful on the four, uh, four, trying to take over everything within the municipality area. The, uh, the one off of Hughes Crescent, and just to share my viewpoint on it, was appealing not only for, uh, potential self-division, but also for that commercial appeal, if that does expand through there and we, and we start expanding business along Hughes Crescent, we also have that opportunity on the opposite side as well to... But I do like what councillor Kristoff is suggesting in between those two areas, so maybe we could focus on both of those areas, if that's what council would like to focus on. But I wouldn't want to, uh, bombard the ministry with all sorts of different crown lands. I think we should be focused on a couple of properties when we forward and see if we can become successful with that. There's also costs associated with crown lands as well too, uh, overall process that we're going to get there.
So, or, just for clarification, would we not just throw, would we not just pass for ideas on areas like that? So that's why we threw out three different spots.
Yeah, no, for sure.
For, uh, to look at.
As group.
Though she was not using it.
Like we can narrow it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm just saying that councillor Kristoff, in regards to, we should be mindful that choosing whatever it is that council wants to decide with a couple of properties versus four or five percent, we should choose out there on a couple when we make that decision.
Dave, if you look at the map that shows, that they can pass on. You know, is there an opportunity to extend, to extend, see if Paul's acre? Again, just throwing out, just ideas. Uh, that's all the power that you there. I, you know, they, that, if I'm not mistaken, that is patented mine claim, uh, as well, because, uh, that was all part of Charlie Peterson property. So I, I'm not sure if we could acquire any of that, but it would be something to look at, like you said. But you, the, just a, you, you're probably on the same piece though, right? Like it's the yellow piece from, you hear?
Yep.
Okay.
Charlie Peterson's property, uh, but that's a simple access point, that, that Charlie Peterson came in through this way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and just a, just a reminder, I'm definitely, uh, up for whatever we can get a hold of. Um, personally, I think, uh, with the fire team, we're in the zone, I do, I think we really need to look forward to, uh, getting some properties for development purposes. All right, we have any questions or any more, um, observations?
Just, uh, we, we will have another conversation with regards to that.
Yes, yes.
So we plan to take it.
So could we ask that, that, um, you spent this week looking at it, and we bring it back to council? Is that fair?
Definitely. All right, we have no more questions or, or observations. Uh, moved by councillor Verdu, seconded by councillor Kristoff, and all the committee of the whole nearby governance to meet again at the call of the chair. Everyone in favor?